15th and Cardinals Planning Commission meeting to order. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. If I could have a roll call, please. Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson is absent this evening. Vice Chair Silverman?
Present.
Chair Bergman?
Present. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public comment. Public comment is limited to items not on the posted agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on something that is not on the agenda for this evening? Okay, all right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Do we have any changes or modifications to the April 17 minutes?
I didn't see any. Move approval.
All right, that'll... Second. Do we get a move in a second? Was that a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the commission, staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Item A is general plan conformity determination for capital improvement projects proposed for the fiscal years 2017 through 2019. Are there any discussions?
We can't. Unless someone wants to pull it from consent, we either need to approve it or not. Move approval. Second.
Roll call. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing, and the procedure for the public hearing is as follows. The staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendation. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded, and this will assist staff in preparing the minutes. So we have a pretty heavy agenda today, but I think we'll be able to get through this. First thing on the agenda is 600 Knoll Avenue, APN 050-261-460. Consideration of a modified grading and dirt hall certificate for an alternate dirt hall route. Do we have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Lisa Porras, and I will be giving this presentation to you this evening. As you may recall, the commission did approve design review and an associated grading and dirt hall certificate for the property at 600 Knoll Drive back in November of last year. As part of that approval, one of the conditions imposed on the project was to require that staff work with the applicant and our public works staff to determine if there was an alternate route that could be proposed that would ostensibly meet the objective to require that trucks not turn around on site and not need to pass each other en route to and from the project site. So before you this evening is that alternate route that the applicant and staff have looked at, of which has been reviewed by Public Works. They have no objections. So as this diagram shows, I will start with the route to the site, and the proposed route to the site, and again, this is found on page two of your staff report, is from traveling U.S. Highway 101 North. The trucks would exit on Whipple, turn left on Whipple, and then turn right onto El Camino Real, make their way to Britton Avenue where they would turn left, and then turn right onto Cordilleras Avenue, make a right on Elizabeth, and end at the corner of Elizabeth Avenue and Knoll Drive. When trucks exited the site, they would be exiting onto Elizabeth Street, turning left onto Orange, making a sharp right onto Cedar, making their way to Britton Avenue, and then turning left and then proceed all the way to U.S. Highway 101 South. So again, that is the proposed alternate route pursuant to a previous condition that the planning commission had requested. Staff had sent out the notice to all neighbors as required per code, and we received several comments back. There were emails and, I think, a phone call made with comments noted, and those are reflected in the staff report. But to summarize, some of the concerns received was with the dirt hall route and its impact during the school session, concerns about dust and damage to the road. These are similar comments that we had heard before, and conditions have been and are carried forward in the revised grading and dirt hall certificate. For example, condition number 24 addresses dirt and, you know, dust pursuant to the Bay Area Quality Management District Best Management Practices. You'll see that as condition number four in the dirt hall certificate. With respect to concerns about damages to the road, condition number six addresses that there is a requirement to post a bond and also survey the conditions of the street after the activity occurs. Although not noted in the conditions of approval, I am told by the applicant that their plans for grading wouldn't occur until after school adjourned, so there would be no impacts or conflicts associated with that particular schedule. The applicant notes that the off-haul, the dirt off-hauling from the site would occur over a period of five days. There is a condition in the certificate, this is noted as condition number 18, which requires courtesy notices be sent out prior to the grading activity. We did receive a request from a neighbor to propose an alternate route, which was emailed to the commission, and a copy is available on the diast. And since that time, we just recently received another letter from a neighbor this afternoon, which is also available on the diast. Should you choose to make a motion to approve the alternate route that has been, that has been proposed to you this evening, this would be the motion you would make. I am available if there's any questions. The applicant is here tonight, and we also have Grace Lee, our city engineer, in attendance this evening as well. Thank you.
Any question for staff? No? Does the applicant wish to make a statement, or are you just here in case? Okay, all right. All right, is there anyone here from the public that wishes to make a statement on this? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Thank you. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, any... I want to acknowledge first that the two pieces of email that we have regarding this issue, one from Kathy and Annie Goforth, and one from Louis and Helen Hahn. Both of them, they are on the diast and they are part of the packet. And do we have any discussion on this? I am looking over at these emails, and I don't know if, I mean, we've already had the hall up in front of us once, and we requested that they modify it, and now they've come back and they modify it. So I think that the city is working with us to get the better route. I haven't evaluated whether this route seems better, but at this point, since we've already, this is the second modification to the route that we've asked for.
My recollection is our concern was, and we have a lot of discussion from the community about how narrow those roads were, and we had driven them ourselves. And there was discussion about, well, how, because the trucks were going to be leaving the same way they came in.
Right.
How are they going to turn around? And then there was, the discussion was, well, they'll just turn around on the property, but then the concern was, well, are they really going to be able to do that? Wouldn't it be better in order to have a route that didn't require turning around? And so we suggested that they see if they could come up with one that the city liked just as much. Presumably, the city likes this one just as much. No one loves cars, trucks driving in front of their house. So while I'm sympathetic to the folks who may not have had their house as part of the route before, although actually, I think one of them actually did the first time as well with the other route, I mean, I'm prepared to approve it without any further discussion.
Any other comment?
Well, Public Works has gone through this with the staff, so I don't know if this is the best alternative route that they've come up with. And I know we've done this multiple times on multiple grading permits and dirt hauling permits. That's always a concern of ours, so staffs made the recommendation, this is the best way with Public Works' recommendation, I think that we should probably just go with that.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
If there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission grant approval of the amended grading and dirt hall certificate for 1532 cubic yards of total grading and 1172 cubic yards of off-haul associated with the construction of a new single-family residence and associated accessory buildings at 600 Knoll Drive, APN 050-261-460, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as conditioned in the grading and dirt hall certificate.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is 520 El Camino Real, APN 050-074-020. Consideration of an amendment to the below-market-rate housing plan approved on May 16, 2016. Good to see you again.
Thanks, good to see you too. All right, sorry, this is a little bit wonky today. Good evening, Chair.
Technical term, wonky. I knew it myself.
Very technical term. I'll just sort of leave it on here. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. I'm Nell Seelander, Economic Development and Housing Manager. I'm here to give you a very brief presentation on the proposed amendment to the Below Market Rate Housing Plan, or BMR, plan for 520 El Camino Real. The project is a nine-unit for-sale development on a vacant lot. In May 2016, the Planning Commission approved a BMR plan, design review, and tentative map for this project. The only item up for reconsideration today is the BMR plan. So to put this project in context, I wanted to give you a brief refresher on the BMR requirement. For projects of seven or more ownership units, the owner is required to build 15% affordable, that's 10% moderate income, and 5% low income. If the 15% calculation results in a decimal fraction less than one-half, instead of rounding way up, the developer, the project owner, would pay a partial unit fee. What this translates to for 520 El Camino Real is a requirement to build one moderate-income for-sale unit and pay a partial unit fee of approximately $100,000. Originally, when the project owner applied for entitlements, they proposed an alternative to that requirement. Specifically, they proposed building one very low-income rental unit, and the Planning Commission approved that alternative last May and provided a concession in the code compliance certificate, which is required for BMR rentals in order to restrict the price for the 55-year term of the rental restriction. And that concession was a waiver of the partial unit fee. So since the May 2016 approval of that project, the property sold, and the new owner has proposed amending the BMR plan to revert back to the basic BMR requirement. And that amendment would provide for one moderate-income unit and then the payment of the partial unit fee. Staff recommends approval of this amendment. And here's the formal motion for you, for your consideration. I'm available to answer any questions on this, as is Laura Russell, our senior planner, who's worked on it a bit, and the project architect, Moshe Dinar.
So we're basically, if we approve this, we're approving to move it back to what our code specifies and just not have the waiver, but to have it fully comply with our code?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for?
No.
I don't see anything in the code compliance certificate that deals with selection of the unit. Is that located somewhere else?
Of which specific unit? Yes, so the first...
Not the specific unit, but the choice between a moderate-income for-sale unit and a very low-income rental unit. There's no, I don't see any change to the actual code compliance certificate. Is it somewhere else?
So it's written as, we didn't change the language of the original entitlement, which was, or the original code compliance certificate, which just states that the below-market-rate housing agreement will be executed and approved by the city attorney and the housing administrator. So we left all that language as-is. It was never specified in the code compliance certificate that it was a rental agreement. It just relies on the staff report and the minutes from that meeting for the approval of that approved BMR plan. So the BMR plan you'll see is attached to, it's the second attachment, attachment two, which lists specifically what is being proposed, which is the moderate-income unit and where it's located in the building.
So the number 17, where it says the applicant shall provide below-market-rate unit with a transit pass fully subsidized for 10 years, does not change? This is still a BMR unit, correct? So that doesn't change?
Correct, yes. Good evening, Laura Russell, senior planner. If you wanted to link, Commissioner Silverman, your comment more strongly to the conditions of approval, we would recommend an alteration of condition number one that would specify that the below-market-rate housing plan would be the one reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission on today's date. So that way, it would more specifically link it to the attachment to the staff report this evening.
I just want to make sure we do what we're trying to do. I mean, if the city attorney says that's not necessary, then that's fine. I just didn't see any, I didn't see, we approved the code compliance certificate. If it's not in the code compliance certificate, I kind of wondered why it was even back before us, but...
So there is the one line at the very top of that which says the below-market-rate housing plan subsequently amended on May 15, 2017. So in the very first, this is to certify, paragraph of the code compliance certificate and attachment to, does refer to this date and the amendment on this date.
Okay, all right.
And just to add, I, the intention was to have the agreement include that, and I'm not sure if a draft on this particular project, if we've reviewed the draft agreement yet, but, not yet, but it was, that's where it would be reflected specifically.
Okay. Okay, is there any, is the applicant here wish to make a statement? No? Okay, is there anyone from the public wish to make a statement on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I mean, I would just note that, I mean, I, if it complies with the code, I mean, I don't know if there's anything we can do. I thought it was very nice that there was a...
Very low?
A very low rental unit, but it is what it is. I'd also note that with the striking of 19, my recollection was that we had wanted them to provide for the faux windows and balconies. So I don't, I mean, I think we couldn't require, my recollection is we couldn't require them to do it, but we made it an option for them. It seems weird to strike it out, but otherwise, it's fine with me.
Okay, so now there won't be faux windows and balconies because it's a real unit?
No, it wasn't, I don't think, it was about the setback.
Which was in relation to the site setbacks.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
I mean, this is a year ago, so my memory is not that great.
I thought we made it a requirement that they do that.
I thought we did, too.
Yeah. Because we had a real problem with the massing and how it didn't look what we wanted our downtown to look like, and so that's when Al gave us the option of the faux window. So can we make sure that that's still in there?
Well, it's not, I don't think, because I think it's being struck in 19, and it was, looks like it was provided as a voluntary thing. And I mean, I remember that we had wanted it because we were concerned about the facade and the setback. But, you know, again, it was a year ago, so my memory isn't super clear.
Can we get some help from staff on this one?
Angela would remember, if Angela was here.
Yeah. If I recall correctly, the issue had to do with the openings that were proposed, so by having, you know, out of compliance with the code. But because the applicant was proposing an alternative to the BMR plan, one of the incentives that they were offered was to have some flexibility with that code requirement, and, which would allow them to put in some faux windows rather than having them be the real windows. I mean, they wouldn't be able to do the real windows because they wouldn't comply with the code requirements. So this, that was specifically tied to the, to sort of like a concession that they would receive by proposing that BMR alternative for the rental unit.
So I don't remember it that way.
I don't either.
I remember, and that's what I was actually talking to Nell about, I don't remember it as a concession for BMR. I remember it as a design review issue, and it was required to be done, and you're going to, they were going to work with staff on the design of that. That's what I remember. I mean, this has it linked to the BMR, and that wasn't my recollection. And I actually, I was just, I was trying to review the ending of that meeting, but I did hear most of the communication during that meeting, and I think that's what we're all saying at that point.
Give staff just a minute, thank you. So one of the options that we can do is review the minutes and bring the minutes back, if the Planning Commission specifically recalls requiring that as a condition not related to the BMR plan. And I think that's what the Planning Commission is stating this evening, is that they don't, you don't recall linking it, or it was not your intent to have it be linked as part of the BMR alternative. So we could bring the minutes back to review and consider, so that we can make sure that we're getting the right direction from the commission on that item.
I don't have a problem with the new BMR proposal because it's in line with our code, but I don't remember the way that it's being presented here, so I personally, I'd like to see it reviewed.
That last element to it.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Just, he wants to clarify what...
I closed public comment, but he can still come up, he's the applicant, right? Do I need to reopen it?
Yeah, I need to reopen.
Okay.
I move to reopen.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, please.
We never imagined or assumed or requested that we would not put the faux windows. We believe that the commission requested them. We agreed with the director of planning that they're needed, and we don't want to see a blank wall over there. We are definitely putting in the windows. They're in the construction documents, they're currently being reviewed. This issue of the BMR was a separate request from the new owner, has nothing to do with the faux windows, which will be installed so the building looks the best that it possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to... Well, does anyone want to just be closing?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we, how do we proceed?
Do we add like a condition or something?
Well, the condition has to be related to the amendment to the BMR, because that's what's on the agenda tonight. So that's what I thought the tie was, is that it was part of the concession, so it was sort of a mooted condition. So I think you can rely on the statements that the gentleman made, and you can leave the condition the way it was, or leave it as recommended to be changed if there is a tie with the, with the BMR on that condition. So I mean, it sounds like it wasn't, so I would recommend you take out the deletion of that and just not change that condition. It's really, the way the condition's worded, it's an election by the applicant anyway, so...
Okay, so can we strike the strike and still approve the BMR? So moved, okay. That's what I would recommend that we do.
It's fine, I just, I'm afraid that the, they were only able to do the faux windows because of the below-market-rate incentive. I mean, I'm afraid that that's the case, and if that's the case, it doesn't matter if they want to do it, but...
No, I think they're going, it sounds like they're moving forward with that anyways. It's in-building right now with that design, so...
All right.
Is that a... I'm comfortable with that. I mean, that the record reflects what the applicant said and kind of the commission's response back in, back in May of 2016. And we're reviewing the tape, I did review the tape, it, I mean, that was, that was basically the genesis of what we decided at the beginning. It wasn't linked to the BMR at all. It was more of the design at that point.
And through the chair for clarification of the commission, by having the windows be false or faux, it would comply with the requirements of the code because it's not a real window.
Does that mean that they have to change their plans at all?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay, I'd entertain a motion, or, yeah. Are we ready to move forward with the motion on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Guess I'll make the motion since nobody else is. I move that the Planning Commission grant approval of the request to amend the below-market-rate housing plan at 520 El Camino Real, APN 050-074-020.
Second.
Probably going to strike the...
Are we going to unstrike condition 19?
Striking condition 19. Unstriking.
Okay, unstriking condition 19. Okay, now I think we're ready for a second.
Second, my second.
Okay, roll call. Phew. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 815 Cherry Lane, APN 046-100-370. Consideration of design review and approval of a freeway-oriented wall sign for Alno, A-L-N-O, German kitchens. Do we have a presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Brittany Whitehill, planning technician. And this evening, I will be presenting a request for design review approval of a freeway-oriented wall sign for Alno German kitchens. The property at 815 Cherry Lane is located on the south side of Cherry Lane, where Cherry Lane dead-ends into Highway 101. Highway 101 is located to the east of the subject property. The subject property abuts three other heavy industrial properties to the south and west. The property is zoned heavy industrial, and the general planned land use designation is planned industrial. The applicant proposes to add a 41.5 square foot freeway-oriented wall sign that reads "Alno German kitchens." The words are comprised of five-inch-deep internally illuminated channel letters painted in red, and the applicant has recently provided some color samples if you want to see those. The letters that read "Alno" are capitalized and 28.5 inches tall. The letters reading "German kitchens" are approximately 22 inches tall. The total dimensions of the proposed signage are 28.5 feet in height and approximately 25 feet wide, sorry, 28.5 inches in height. The wall sign will be mounted on the east elevation facing Highway 101. And staff has not received any comments from the public regarding these applications. This is the motion that you would make should you choose to approve this application. And representatives from the applicant, the sign works, are here to answer any questions, and I'm also available for questions. Thank you.
Doesn't sound like anything from the sign is out of compliance, we're not asking for any waivers or anything like that, so everything is within code?
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions for staff? No? Okay. Does the applicant wish to make a comment, or just, okay?
If there are any questions, I would like to answer.
Okay.
Please, straightforward, please.
All right, thanks. Does anyone from the public wish to make a... All right, thanks. Does anyone from the public wish to make a statement on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman.
Yes.
And Chair Bergman.
Yes.
Any discussion on this? Okay, I entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission approve the application of the sign works for design review. Approval of one wall sign reading Alno German kitchens at 815 Cherry Lane, San Carlos, APN 046100370, based on the required findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman.
Yes.
And Chair Bergman.
Yes.
There you go. Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is 835 and 883 East San Carlos Avenue, APN 046-090-380 and 046-090-390. Consideration of design review, sign program and conditional use permit. And do we have a presentation?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Lisa Costa Sanders, principal planner. The project before you, sorry. Say that again? The project before you tonight is a, there we go, coordinated development between two property owners. The rear parcel at 835 East San Carlos Avenue is just over 44,000 square feet and contains an existing 20,000 square foot building. The parcel, that parcel is adjacent to Highway 101. And the front parcel at 883 East San Carlos Avenue is 37,000 square feet in area with a 17,000 square foot building. The properties are both adjacent to East San Carlos Avenue, which is a private road with public access easements. The site is also adjacent to the new Landmark Hotel development, which is currently under construction and located near the future traffic signal that would be located at the intersection of East San Carlos Avenue and Industrial Road. There's also a future bike and pedestrian overpass that would link from East San Carlos Avenue over Highway 101 to Redwood Shores. And so that would run directly along this property frontage. The request before you this evening is for design review for coordinated facade improvements for a conditional use permit to allow a mix of retail and office uses with commercial uses and a coordinated sign design program. On the design review, the facade improvements to the existing building involve a coordinated design to complement the architectural theme of the new Landmark Hotel. There's no additional square footage or other modifications to the building beyond just the facade improvements. The design includes use of stained vertical wood siding, stone veneer, stained redwood trellis, metal clad canopies, and new glass storefronts. The use of varied colors and materials together with the new storefronts breaks up the current blank walls to create a more attractive and updated building facade. And I have the. On the sign program, the applicant is proposing coordinated sign program within the maximum square footage for each property. Tenant signs are proposed at 12 square feet each along San Carlos, East San Carlos Avenue, and three signs are proposed at 24 square feet each along Highway 101. The signs will be individual channel letters with space for corporate logo. The applicant also proposes two monument signs. Given the orientation of the building on the lot, the monument signs will help with wayfinding. And then the conditional use permit, one would be issued for each property and that would allow a mix of retail, food service, office, commercial, and warehouse uses. The code for this zoning district currently requires, currently requires a conditional use permit for a retail use. So what you'd be doing this evening would be providing for a master conditional use permit that would allow those future retail tenants to change over time. We've heard a lot from tenants that it's quite cumbersome process to go through, costly, timely, to get a new conditional use permit each time there would be a change in a tenant. So this would approve that moving forward. What staff would do with each application is evaluate it to make sure it complies with any performance standards in the code and make sure it complies with the onsite parking requirement. So as you see with that table, there is a limitation on how much retail space can be occupied. So there will continually be a mix of some commercial or light industrial uses, maybe a warehouse use with this potential new retail uses. And then any, let's see, outreach. The applicant did mail an outreach letter, did not receive any comments. Staff mailed and published the public notice on two occasions and has not received any comments. I have before you the motion should you wish to grant the approvals. And the, both property owners are also here this evening if you have any questions of them as well as their architect. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
So I noticed in the, in the report on page three, it says, "The project includes new landscaped areas." And then it says, and I quote, "In an effort to comply with the city's 10% onsite landscape area requirement." So how close to 10% are they?
Yeah, since it's not a new building, it's not an exact requirement. One building does comply with that requirement and the other building unfortunately, due to the parking and other site restrictions, does not fully comply.
I'm just wondering because, you know, I looked at the renderings and there are all sorts of, you know, nice little trees on the renderings. And the landscape plan says they're going to take one tree out and put one tree in.
Correct.
So are all of those trees already there?
Correct. So at the frontage, there's existing trees along Industrial Road and one tree needs to be removed to make way for the new traffic signal. And so that tree will be relocated. It'll be replaced with a new tree.
I mean, I, I went by, I, all of these trees on the rendering are out there right now? No, the applicant shaking their head. That's why I worry about these renderings because, yeah, I mean, this is not what the site looks like as far as landscaping.
Oh, some of those trees are, were the ones in front of the landmark site that you're looking at. There's a few trees along the building frontage. Those are existing.
So how many trees are there out there right now?
I didn't do a tree inventory, so I'd have to have the applicant respond to that.
Okay. I mean, can we require more trees? I'm, I'm having a Scott Marsters moment.
Really a limited site.
Speak for the trees.
And I know we talked about opportunities to plant some trees, to get some additional landscaping. Maybe the architect can go into that a bit, but it's, it's pretty tight with how the parking is laid out.
And how many, the other thing, I was looking at these, on the next page, there's the, there's the parking that they would, is this, is this the existing parking?
Exactly.
So they currently have 95 spaces and this is how they're proposing allotting them?
Right. I believe there's a little bit of a reconfiguration at the rear, but yes, this would be the total parking.
But they have 95 spaces now?
Let me clarify. We're, they're going to be restriping the lot with the repaving that's being completed by the Landmark Hotel. So at the completion of that, this will be the number of parking spaces. I'm not sure about the previous condition.
Maybe the applicant can come up.
We'll let the applicant respond to it. Because we reviewed the parking layout in a coordinated design with the Landmark Hotel. There needed to be some reconfiguration due to the grading, site changes.
I just, I'm concerned, my recollection when we approved, and it's all bleeding together now, but when we approved this hotel, we were concerned about the amount of parking that the hotel was providing. And we were assured, because it was, and correct me parking guru, my recollection, it was like, it was less spots than rooms and then there was nowhere for the employees to park. And then we're going to put.
We're changing use now.
Yeah, we're changing use across the street except it's not going to, it's not going to need to be approved by the planning commission. And we don't know what it's going to be there and we don't know how much parking is going to, anyway. It's not, I don't, I don't mean to, it's not you. It's just, there's a lot of, there's just a lot of uncertainty in this proposal, like just a lot of, I think the facade is beautiful, but there's just a lot of uncertainty left as to what's actually going to happen, what's going to go there.
Well, they're limited by the parking. So the, any new retail use, the max square footage is limited based on how many parking spaces there are onsite.
Based off of the other uses.
So there's going to have to be a mix of uses onsite at all times.
So they'll be compliant with every use?
Correct.
As the tenants are rolling, basically, as new tenants are coming in.
And they're not asking for a parking exception or a reduction in parking. So these two properties individually will each have to fully comply with their own onsite parking requirements. They're not working together on a shared parking agreement. It's individual.
So the good thing is that we have a TDM plan for the hotel that remains in place that, we were concerned, really concerned about the parking for the, for the hotel. And so I think the mechanism would be, since they're going to be following code with parking requirements, it's probably going to fall back onto the, really looking at the TDM plan on a consistent basis for the hotel.
Hotel, correct.
Which we should be doing anyways.
That's correct.
But just in speaking to the conditional, cost of the conditional use, I know we've talked, we've talked about that and how expensive it is and the process for that. So I kind of like the way that this is kind of structured, given that the tenant mix is going to switch, but you'll, they'll be complying with every, every switch, so.
Correct.
Any other questions for staff?
And I'm the parking guy, so.
You are the parking guy. We need, we need a new tree person, but we have our parking guru. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Does the applicant wish to make a statement?
We're here to answer any questions.
Okay. All right, does anyone from the, yeah, please.
Good evening, council members. Thomas Newton, 883 East San Carlos. I just want to clarify for Mr. Silverman, our Commissioner Silverman. With respect to what you see today, the plans for the new parking arrangement have already been applied for and approved via a permit that went in when the hotel closed. So the plans that you are, the plans that are before you today for the parking is not in effect now, but they are part of a permit that has already been granted. So that's why there might be some confusion.
And how many spots are there going to be?
Forty, plus two motorcycles, so 42 total.
On just 883?
For 883, yes.
And then how many for 835?
As written in the diagram, I don't actually know if you are adding or removing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but 835 is as it is. There's a few additional spaces in the back that'll be added. As, as we fill the building and the parking requirement changes, we will make sure that those spaces are, it's just a reconfiguration. It just adds a few spaces. So I, all the spaces that are on my property now are going to stay with the exception of reconfiguring the backlot to add a couple of more. But that, again, will just be as the use of the building changes and we need those spots.
So if you're trying to squeeze a retail that requires more instead of an industrial, that's where the other two spaces will come in to be able to allot.
Exactly, yes.
Okay. Any comment on squeezing, squeezing more trees on the, on the property?
You guys quickly went away from the. Trees, please.
Yes, please speak for the trees.
I believe you were, you all received a full set of the drawings that were distributed and the landscape drawings accurately represent the trees that are a part of this permit application.
Okay.
I think it's consistent with most design, and I believe that's at the end of the set of drawings. There are two landscape drawings, L1 and L2, and they show exactly the number of trees. L1, I think we'll show it. So I would suggest most, most designs that you see represented in, in 3D renderings are often more illustrative than, than representative. I see drawings are what we're committing to.
Yeah, it's still quite a lot.
To answer the other question, I think there are 53 parking spaces at 835 East San Carlos.
Thank you. These are, these are existing?
It can't be. Very few are, very few are existing.
These are, these are, these are your proposal and these are?
The ones that are in show with the dash line are existing.
Okay.
On the frontage of.
Here.
Of, yeah.
Okay. And these are proposed?
That's correct.
Okay.
So that's a fair number of trees.
Yeah, no, it looks like you're planting, I'm counting just on this property, 16 trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Nice design.
All right, thank you very much. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman.
Yes.
Chair Bergman.
Yes.
Any discussion? I like that we're doing a master conditional use permit instead of having to have every single one changed. I think that's a good idea.
I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission grant approval of the requests for design review, conditional use permit, and sign program at 835 East San Carlos Avenue and 883 East San Carlos Avenue.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman.
Yes.
And Chair Bergman.
Yes.
There you go. Okay, next item, the, next item on the agenda is 1091 Industrial Road Hotel Development in consideration of mitigated negative declaration, a planned development plan and accompanying zoning map, amendment to rezone the subject site from general commercial slash industrial, GCI zoning district to a planned development zoning district, design review, and transportation demand management plan. And I bet we have a presentation.
Thank you, yes, we have a presentation. All right, you adequately introduced the items, so I'll get right into it. The subject site's just under 1.6 acres and is located at the corner of Industrial Road and Britton Avenue. The site is currently developed with a 40,000 square foot two-story commercial building. The zoning and general plan designation for the site is general commercial industrial. The site is bordered by Pulgas Creek and is near the Highway 101 Britton on and off ramp. The applicant is requesting, proposing to construct a new 162-room hotel with attached parking structure and landscape improvements. The requested entitlements include a zoning map amendment to zone the site planned development from the existing general commercial industrial designation, approve the planned development permit, and conduct the design review and approve the transportation demand management plan. The secret document prepared for this project was a mitigated negative declaration that was prepared to evaluate the project in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Potential impacts were identified relating to biological, cultural, geological, greenhouse gas emission, hydrology, and water quality as a result during the construction. With implementation of the mitigation measures, all impacts are reduced to less than significant Although not a significant impact, traffic is always of interest with new developments. A traffic study was completed and determined that the project would generate a net increase of 62 AM peak hour trips and 72 PM peak hour trips. No new significant traffic impacts were identified in the traffic study as a result of this project. The applicant has agreed to donate land along Britton Avenue and Industrial Road to accommodate future roadway improvements by the city. Jumping ahead there, sorry. All right, this is the view of the building along Industrial Road at the intersection of Britton Avenue. My apologies, an incorrect version of the building facade was included in your packet. This is the correct version tonight. And let me explain, the difference is relating to the parking structure. We're not trying to build a Green Monster here with a full wall. Rather, it'll be metal clad parking structure, that's a decorative element, and have some elements of a green screen on it. Also, the metal clad is also shown as a decorative element in the upper levels of the facade adjacent to the window treatment. The architectural design of the building is contemporary with use of painted concrete, glazing system, white window frames, and decorative metal panels are staggered within the. glazing system, white window frames, and decorative metal panels are staggered within the windows. The parking structure is enclosed also with decorative metal panels and the use of a staggered green screen to break up that mass. The front entry canopy includes a green roof and the lobby has large storefront windows. This is the building elevation, if you were traveling, you would see it southbound on Industrial Road. As you've seen, the green screen is staggered along the building frontage to provide design interest and break up the parking structure. The building design does wrap around all sides of the building. As you see here, we have the windows wrapping around as well as the decorative metal elements. The project also includes new landscape improvements adjacent to the creek which are not represented in this graphic, we'd need to refer to the landscape plan. And then this is a view, if you were traveling westbound on Britton Avenue, just leaving Highway 101. This is the rear of the building. The architectural details, as I indicated, also wrap around all sides of the building here with the first-floor storefront windows wrapping around as well as the upper-level guest room windows. The rear also includes the parking structure, the enclosed pool, and a green deck. The applicant is requesting a zoning amendment to rezone the site from general commercial industrial to planned development. The project complies with all development standards except the following that are listed here. Height, the request is to exceed the maximum 50-foot height limit with the new 80-foot-tall building to the top of the parapet and 84 feet to the top of the tower. The code does require a creek setback of 25 feet. Currently, there's essentially no creek setback with the pavement of the existing parking lot. The applicant's proposing to improve that condition and has proposed a 10-foot creek setback for the new development. On floor area, they're requesting an increase from the 2.0 floor area to 2.46, and that's essentially to accommodate the parking structure. And finally, on signage, requesting allowance up to 360 square feet distributed throughout the building as well as a monument sign, and the code allow currently provides to a maximum of 150 feet. And just to put you in context a little bit with some other developments that have been approved, the top is the proposed hotels, I indicated 80 feet to top of parapet, 84 feet to top of tower. And then the Windy Hill recently approved development is 87 feet 3 inches to top of parapet and 97 feet to top of roof screen. Palo Alto Medical Facility, that's all completed, total height of 84 feet. The applicant has submitted TDM program as required by code. They will be having a hotel shuttle for guests onsite. There's also showers, lockers, convenience, retail, fitness center, recreation amenities for guests as well as for employees. It is within walking distance of transit, there's a bus line as well as good proximity to the train station, and there is also sufficient bicycle parking. As far as outreach, the mitigated negative declaration was circulated for public review September through October of last year, and no comments were received on that document. The applicant also mailed information to property owners and occupants and reached out to the Greater East Side Board. The applicant did not receive any input. Staff mailed and published notices on two occasions and has received one public comment as attached to your packet. Comments include a question about hotel incentives for public transit, noting the need for more affordable housing, asking about the provision of community benefits, and also requesting additional sustainable measures. And we have a couple of motions before you. I just want to remind the commission that you would be the recommending body on the SEQA document, the mitigated negative declaration, also the recommending body on the zoning amendment, so the planned development permit and the PD ordinance recommending that to city councils. That's contained in two separate resolutions. And then you're the decision-making body relating to the design review and the transportation demand management plan. That one certificate would be effective at the effective date of the PD ordinance should the council approve it. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and sorry, I wanted to note for the record, you should have in front of you a public comment from resident Angela Harper-Petterson, and there's also copies in the back from that member of the public. So I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, and also, the applicant is here this evening.
I think I want to declare an expat communication with the applicant before we go much further.
Thank you. You want to load the applicant's presentation?
And do we have any other, does the applicant wish to make a statement?
The applicant has a brief presentation.
Presentation, statement, sorry. Presentation, please.
Good evening, I'm Bill Ryan with Swenson Development. I wanted to introduce our team. First off, I've got Kevin Kiefer here from the Huntington Group, Scott McGill from Aubrey Cook Rogers McGill, he's our architect, Blair Edson from our construction team, Swenson Development, and my associate Cole Strombaum. When I first looked at this site as an opportunity for development, my first phone call was to Al Savay, and both Al and I agreed that this was an excellent site for a hotel for a number of reasons. The proximity to the freeway, we both felt it was an opportunity for a landmark site, a gateway site into the city. We have the opportunity here to create a tax base for the city using transit occupancy tax without any request for subsidies from the city. So we both concluded that this was the right path, and we've been on it ever since. My second phone call was to Kevin Kiefer, our partner in the hotel business. Our company does a lot of joint ventures with other hotels, groups, but Kevin was my first choice, and the reason being, I've been a long-term resident in San Carlos, I've lived in the city for almost 30 years. Not only am I concerned about the construction and the architecture of this project, but I'm also very concerned about the long-term management of the project. Kevin is a long-term holder, he's a pride of ownership builder, developer, and I'm proud to have him as my partner. I think you will be very proud of this project, and not only proud of it now, but proud of it in the future, and look forward to the balance of the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Cole right now.
Just want to talk a little bit about our planning timeline. We acquired the property in March of 2015. We were working with city staff, having initial discussions, and submitted our pre-application in September of 2015, addressed all comments thoroughly, and submitted our formal application in March of 2016. We've been working with city staff per their guidance on the design pretty consistently since then. We submitted, resubmitted in June of 2017, sorry, 2016, when the SEQA process was initiated. Since then, we've been working with them and in coordination with Public Works to dedicate our land, which was per their request for the plan, capital improvements at Britton Industrial. We're going to end up dedicating about 5,000 square feet of land, which will allow for the widening of both Britton and Industrial. I'll turn it over to Scott McGill, who can answer any questions about the architecture.
Good evening, Scott McGill with ACRM Architects. I have a very brief PowerPoint presentation that we can go through. Lisa already touched, did a very thorough job on the actual design, but we can go through here very quickly. The project summary, she hit on the highlights, 162 guest rooms, seven-story building. We've got interior structured parking in combination with surface parking and various bike racks, cure bike racks and lockers. The site, there's the current condition of the site from the corner of Britton and Industrial, and there's how it would appear in the ultimate design. And coming from the north, and from the west. And then this would be the view coming off of the Highway 101. And the view from the highway. The proposed site plan, ample landscaping, limited surface parking, the majority of our parking is in structured parking screen from the public, which you see here in the yellow. And then this is a typical guest room floor. The elevations, it's a variety, it's a very contemporary design, a variety of varied planes and colors, keeping the color palette very relatively simple. And the rear elevation. Landscape, there's a large amount of landscape around the perimeter of the building. Fortunately, we were able to maintain a lot of the landscape with the additional take of land for the improvements at the intersection. And there's the proposed plant palette. Thank you very much.
So all the parking is above ground, there's no below-ground parking?
That's correct.
And why was that choice made?
The existing water table, it's just, you'd be prohibited to go underground.
And the massing of the building itself is, it looks very much like a box, and I can't tell by your renderings how articulated the levels are or the different items within the stories are. Could you go over that?
Looking at it from this angle, the actual parking garage is within the building, but then it protrudes out on this to become a large element that protrudes beyond the face of the building. There's actually a step in the facade, in the background, the guest rooms fall back in about five feet, and then the floor protrudes to create a sun shade, and then above the garage, it extends out beyond, so you don't have quite as much of a shadow line. And then there's a, basically a box element that ties the whole composition together into a unified appearance. And the same goes for this side. So you have a variety of planes and offsets with a lot of shadow lines going on.
You stop, now this is, looking at it from what, from Industrial?
This is from Industrial. And that's from the intersection.
And these plant renderings, I mean, that plant that's up on top of the lobby, that actually is supposed, that's part of the design, those plants that are there?
Yes, it'll be a green roof. The artists took a few liberties making a lot of flowers in this thing, it will be mostly grasses.
Anyone else have questions?
I have some.
You want to wait until later?
Well, first of all, just for the record, the applicant reached out to me for a meeting, and I indicated that I didn't think it was going to be worth their time because I thought this was going to happen on May 1st when I wasn't going to be here. And then I spoke on the phone with one of the, one of the folks, and I warned them that I would ask about solar. And I see that, that the response on solar was that, is that there would be basically a space for it and wiring, and, you know, if you could clarify, because if you're not going to put it in, you're not going to put it in. So is there going to be solar or is there not going to be solar?
The intent is, that response isn't even response to the, basically the current green building code, which is just basically a percentage of your roof area that you have to have provisions for the potential of future solar should it be so desired. The owner has taken an interest in providing solar in this building, so it's not just providing the space, but it's most likely going to occur, yes.
Well, what if we wanted to require it, would you be okay with that? I mean, you can, you can take more time if you want, I mean, it's, I want to see it, I mean, I'm just one vote. I warned Cole, and if he had the bad fortune of having this, that I was going to ask for it, so, you know, hopefully.
It's basically a financial decision from the ownership to make, once he actually sees what it costs, but he just indicated that, yes, he would, if you condition it, then that's what.
Okay. And then, as far as the bird-friendly glazing, you say you're going to do it, so can we condition it?
Sure.
Okay. And then, as far as where your employees are going to park, where are they going to park?
They would be parking on-site, the majority of them would be taking public transportation, however, because they live in the area, but there would be accommodations. When we do an actual analysis on a hotel of this type, we find that a lot of guests are not actually driving, a lot of them are taking Uber. So the requirement for the full one per guest key and two for guests for employees, we find is a little bit heavy, and we end up parking, over-parking the building.
Yeah, no, I mean, we've definitely heard, and this, I mean, I'm laughing because like, we've had this discussion before, I mean, how many employees are you going to be having at the maximum employed time?
Maximum employee time is?
Forty.
Forty at any given time?
But that's mostly when there's not a lot of guests there, right? I mean, it's the opposite of when the guest times are, right?
That's correct, that would be between checkout and check-in.
I mean, are you, are you opposed to providing some reasonable incentive for your employees to park, you know, whether, I mean, to take public transportation, something like a 50% subsidy on transit passes or something like that?
Yeah, they've done that in the past, yes.
Okay, if we, if we had a condition, would that be okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
Let's continue, Dave.
What?
I have all the same questions, so you can just run with it.
I may be, I may be almost done. As usual, Mr. Crab often has similar questions that I, to me. Can you, I think it's probably fine, but can you talk a little bit about the permeability of your, of the surfaces that you're using and what you're doing as far as water catchment and that sort of thing?
Yes, let me go. Okay, so on the landscape plan, you'll see that hole, that large corner, the large landscape area on the corner of the Britton and Industrial, that is a retention basin, and then the area to the entire backside of the hotel between, on the, on the upper side, upper portion of the plan, that is also a long retention basin. So we're basically retaining all of our stormwater site, which is required per code. And then the permeability, we are looking at potential, this doesn't necessarily show it, but the surface parking would be permeable pavers, and then also at the pedestrian, or like guest drop-off, but the actual driveline would remain conventional.
And why was that choice made?
Just from a traffic standpoint, we find that a lot of times the permeable pavers don't hold up quite as well from, if, for heavy traffic, so, but in parking areas, they hold up very well.
Okay. As other folks are making comments or asking questions, I mean, the condition I was thinking as far as the solar, it's tough because, you know, here we are, we have to, well, you would prefer that we make a decision today, obviously we would prefer to make a decision today, but you probably don't know exactly how much solar you can put in, and there's the cost, there's also the issue of, you know, you don't want to overpower your building. So the kind of condition I was thinking of is something along the lines of, you know, solar installed to the maximum extent feasible, you know, considering the space available and the power needs of the building in consultation with staff. Do you think that could make it work, you could make that work?
That makes sense, I mean, we're not yet to the stage where we're actually have an actual mechanical plan layout for the actual roof, but that would be the intent, yes. As long as we're going to put solar on, we might as well maximize the value on what we can get.
I think that's, I think that's all I have. You know, I, I hear Angela's. You know, I, I, I hear Angela's comments as well as yours about the massing of the building.
Oh, there's me a lot.
But, you know, I, I'm not an architect. You know, Miss, I don't know if Mr. Crab has some opinions on that or suggestions, but obviously, they worked very hard on the design. There are portions of it that I really like. I like the green screen of the parking structure. It, it does feel, and, you know, to, you know, all due respect to the architect who actually does this for a living, it, it does, on the renderings, feel a little bit massive and blocky, but again, I'm not an architect, so I'm not gonna, I'm not going to try and change the design of the building.
On the, it says, as far as gray water is concerned, there's none planned at this point, but if it's available, it'll be utilized. Don't you have to pre-plan for that? In other words, if you don't put it, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm asking the question, if you plan on using gray water, don't you have to plan for that ahead of time when you build something?
That would be part, that would be part of our plumbing design, yes. It'll be investigated as far as the feasibility of it, but that's definitely the direction we would prefer to take.
Okay, so you still have to decide whether that's feasible or not?
That's correct.
Well, I mean, they could theoretically, I don't know, they could theoretically recycle their own water and use it for irrigation. I mean, you could do that.
It has been done, yes.
Yeah, have you thought about that? It's just another expense, right?
Correct. There again, it's an economic decision the owner just needs to make, so it's, we would, we would certainly, as an architect and engineers, recommend going that direction, but if he comes back and tells me I can't afford it, then he pays my bills.
Yeah, we're also allowing, we're also allowing, well, if we approve this, we're also allowing, what, 30 feet above what it's originally, you know, the height limit, so you're getting a lot of units in there for...
Correct.
That, those 30 feet, right? Just my editorial. Okay. Sorry. Okay. Any other questions?
I'm done right now.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I'd like to say it's a handsome building, but 80 to 84 feet in height far exceeds anything that we have in San Carlos at this time, so keeping that in mind, but it is a nice-looking building.
Thank you.
There's a designer. He actually can comment on the design.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, I'd like to open up a public comment. I have one speaker card here for David Crab, if you want to come up and address the commission.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the council. Here I am again. You all received my letter, it's always been referred to, several items have been covered. The, the one that is not be easy to answer, but I just want to put it on record, is this question about where do you expect the employees to live? Most hotel employees are low-paid, and San Carlos is not a place where low-paid people can easily afford to live. And so this goes back to the city's affordable housing approach, and I just want, every time we approve one of these projects, I just want the city to be aware that you're just making the housing issue more and more of a problem, so I'm just going on record for that. On the, I think most of the, the items on my list are pretty self-explanatory, I've already covered several of them. I did, though, I hadn't expected to do this, but I went back and reviewed the design of the thing, and I quite frankly agree with Shannon, and maybe somewhat with David. I'm not too impressed with the design, all, all respect to the architect. And I actually went online and picked up, I went, took up a whole bunch of photographs of hotels and multifamily units about this size, and I'd like to share them with you of far more interesting to my eye... ways that you could handle this. And one of the things that that does, well, this is a really seri, important corner, because two-thirds of the people, or at least half of the people of San Carlos drive down Britton to go to the freeway, and they're going to see this, like. And so I think it should really be impressive entryway to the, to that area. And the one thing that's consistent through those drawings, and they're, they're just, you know, arbitrarily pulled off the web, is that they really, most of them really treat the corner in a really dramatic, interesting way. And they also have three-dimensional, more up ins and outs, answering the question about the boxy look, and they also, some of them have more color in them, and I think it would be really worth it to, to consider that. I know David said that, you know, as, as a planning commissioner, you know, you want to really take positions on architecture, but since we don't have an architectural design review, you are it.
I mean, this is design review, I get it. It's just, I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm not, but it's like, we're obviously not in a position, well, anyway.
Anyway, I'm not one of you. Anyway, so I just wanted to make that point, if, from my personal opinion, that it should be a, we should really make that a much more impressive building for, to represent the city of San Carlos for people going in and all of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, David. So anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay. All right, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes. Any discussion?
Just some comments. I don't really have a huge issue with the design. The height is what I have the issue with, and while we have a, we've had some precedence of buildings, we've never had one on the corner of such a major intersection. So that's, that's really the biggest, the biggest issue for me right now, is this is an entrance to the city or an exit to the city. We haven't had that issue yet. You know, the hospital is, is closer to the freeway, the new office building is not a major intersection. So I'm having a little bit of an issue with that, but I don't have really an issue with the design itself.
I gotta say, I'm on record as, I, I, since this is design review, I can't, the boxiness of the building itself is enough for me to say no. Everything else about this project, I, is well thought out, is well done, and I know that they gave land over to the city to help with the improvement, but it is, and I mentioned this to Cole, and I, when we spoke, that it, it seems, it's not, it's not articulated enough, and it's, it's right at the opening to our city, and everyone does pass by this, so it, I'm, I'm very concerned about just the massing of the building, and would like to see an effort made to, I mean, there's several examples that were just passed down here, to, to change the massing of the building, not so much, I mean, I'm okay with the height personally, because we have Palo Alto Medical Foundation, we have Meridian going up, so, I mean, that, the precedent's been set, but for that, I'd like to see a little bit more articulation on the, on the massing, and that's just, that's my, my opinion.
Don, do you have any comments?
I mean, I, as I've said before, I recognize this is a design review. I don't, I'm not trying to abandon my responsibility, but, you know, I, I don't really feel like I'm in a position to, to say the entire design is problematic, and I don't, I don't, I don't have a suggestion to simply change the design. I mean, basically, we're either approving it, or we're telling them to go back and redesign the building, and I'm, you know, I, although I, I like some of the pictures that Mr. Crab showed better as a, as a sign, I mean, I, I don't, I'm prepared to vote yes on the project today with the current design, even though it's not my personal aesthetic.
I think we should ask for solar and gray water. I think those are conditions we should put on those, too.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of things I would ask for with an approval, including all the ones I, I covered, and, I mean, if they're okay with gray water, I'd probably condition that as well. I'm not, I'm not hearing, I'm not, I'm not hearing a huge objection, but they can still think about it, just really reusing, using their own recycled water to the extent feasible to irrigate their own, their own landscaping. I mean, to me, that just seems like good stewardship, and I'm hoping that they will not object to a condition. Yeah, I don't think they will, I'm sensing they won't.
Okay.
But, I mean, right now, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I mean, it's not my personal aesthetic, but I'm not an architect, I'm not a design professional, and I don't hate it, it's just not my particular design aesthetic. I, I, there are things I like a lot better, but I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to vote no of it, no because of that personally. But I don't know if there are three votes.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, I mean, you tell me.
I would concur, and I would require solar panels and gray water.
Okay. And it sounds like folks aren't, are also on board with requiring a, a program for transit passes for their employees? And requiring bird-friendly glazing of some kind?
Wasn't the last thing you said?
Bird, bird-friendly materials. So, I mean, those are additional, those are additional conditions that I would add, but I'm not going to make a motion if there aren't three votes for, I mean, I could make a motion, if we're ready for a motion, and see, and see how the votes go.
Where are you going, Jesse?
Everybody's fine with height right now.
Well, I mean, you know, on the height thing, Jesse, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I object, I object to the word precedent, it's not a precedent. Just because we improve one building of more than 50 feet doesn't mean we ever need to approve another building of more than 50 feet. But, I mean, this is, this is a location with wide streets, it's not like it's going to cause a canyon effect or anything. It's a, it's a relatively open space, there's open, open behind, at least for now, there's, you know, wide streets on both, on both sides. I mean, I, I don't, I don't really have an issue with the, the height here, I may have the issue with the height somewhere else. I, I don't have principal, I don't have principal views against higher buildings, you know, to the extent that there's a rationale for it, and here, it's the economics. And let's be frank, I mean, we're not, we're not deciding based on income to the city, but I mean, clearly, you know, that partially drives this. I mean, you let it, you make it taller, so they could have more, more occupancy, which means more TOT for the city. I mean, that's, that's why you do it. And, you know, it's not like, anyway, that, that's my view on it.
Appreciate your view, David. Always.
Okay, so you're okay with the building design, other than the height?
The design, I don't really have an issue with. You know, it's, to me, it's somewhat clean of a design, it, you know, it's not, again, the design that I'm most attracted to, but that's, like David said, it's my personal taste, it has nothing to do with it, really. But it's a clean design, definitely far surpasses what's there right now.
I just think in 10 years, it's gonna...
Well, in 10 years, it's going to look exactly the same as it does. I mean, that's, it's probably built that way, so in 10 years, it's, I mean, it, so, you know, who knows where, where we're going to be in 10 years, but I think it's gonna, it's a safe design, is what, the way I would, I would classify it.
Okay, well, I think we're going to have to break these into two, two things, because I, I'm not gonna, I, it seems like you have enough to pass it for the actual negative, negative declaration, but I won't, I'm going to vote no on the design review.
Okay, well, let's see how it goes then. And the conditions are part of the design review and transportation demand management plan, so I would add the conditions there, right?
I, do you think that all, some of them don't seem like they're transportation-related that you were just talking about? Design-related?
Solar and...
Solar.
Gray water.
I mean, you tell me, I mean, I just need to make a motion. I mean, I guess we could add it to the plan development plan, right? I mean, I don't, I don't, it doesn't matter to me.
I think the transit pass program could be on the TDM management plan, and then the, I think staff and I are agreement that the most appropriate place is design review, because that's where there are conditions of approval.
Okay. So I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopts the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopt the plan development ordinance and planned development plan.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Wait, just a moment. You know, I'd like you to take a separate motion on the environmental review, and then move on to the other three, instead of having them all in one motion.
Not a problem. So I'm gonna, with permission, I'm going to restate and divide my motion. I move that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopts the initial study and negative, mitigated negative declaration.
Give a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
I further move that the planning commission adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopts the planned development ordinance and planned development plan.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
No.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes.
I further move that the planning commission approves the design review and transportation demand management plan for the new 162-room hotel at 1021 Industrial Road, APN 046-151-060, with additional conditions as follows. That the hotel provide a transit pass incentive program to the satisfaction of staff with direction that, to the extent possible, it be something like 50% subsidized transit passes for employees, or something similar. That there be a condition that the project include installation of solar to the extent feasible with the physical space, and to the extent maximum to meet the energy needs for the building in consultation with staff. That the project utilize bird-friendly glazing to, in a design and of a type approved by staff, and that the project utilize gray water to recycle, recycling its, its water for irrigation purposes to the extent feasible, and as approved by staff.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
No.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
No.
Two, two votes mean we have no action on that item, and since it's design review, I think it's, and it's in your purview, I think we need to have action on that. What I've normally recommended is that the, that we continue that item until you have at least five persons and less, you can determine among yourselves tonight whether a different motion with different conditions could muster three votes.
Okay. Yours is, yours is because of the height?
Well, didn't we, I mean, didn't we already approve the height as part of the...
I thought that was the plan development.
Plan development, ordinance and planned development plan? Yeah. So we got the height, but not the design?
It's design, yeah.
Uh-huh.
So, so why did you vote for no on the design?
The design is bulk en masse that was talked about, the ordinance is 18.29.060 that talks about this design standards. So that's massing, you know, design features to eliminate massing, things of that nature. So you should focus on those requirements in evaluating the design concerns that you have.
Well, I know why I voted no, but I'm not quite sure why you voted no on that.
On the massing?
Yeah. I mean, because the height was part of the planned development plan, which is the... I mean, 'cause the height was part of the plan development plan, which is the most...
Yeah, he voted no on that, too. I voted no on that as well.
So, why did you vote on the, on the design review? What part of the design?
I voted yes on the negative declaration, is what I voted yes on, correct?
I know, but we have two votes no and two votes yes for the design review. Why did you vote, did you vote no?
Did we take four, did we take four votes right now? Did I miss one?
No.
Sounded like you said, sounded like you said no.
It's two and two.
What did you mean?
Can we, can, yeah, can we?
I have a vote for the mitigated negative declaration. Then there's a second vote for the planned development and zoning map amendment, NPD zoning, and then the third was design review and transportation management plan. So, I have three motions.
So, I voted two on both of them, on two of them, right?
You voted no on, on the second one, and the third one is...
Yeah.
Time.
Yeah. I guess, for the, for the, for the same reasons, really, the height, the height and, and just the overall, I mean, the design itself, I'm not, I don't really have a huge feeling either way on the design, as, as I mentioned, but the height is really the, the main indicator that I have an issue with.
Well, just to, I'm looking at the design sta, the design criteria, and I'll defer to staff on some of the, you know, interpretation of some of this, but A, 18.29.060A is the overall design of the project, including its scale, massing, site plan, exterior design, and landscaping will enhance the appearance and features of the project site and surrounding natural and built environment. That's the one I think that applies. All the others are talking about, well, let me see, wait. "The project contributes to the creation of an attractive and visually interesting built environment that includes a variety of building styles and designs, with well-articulated structures that present varied building facades, roof lines, and building heights." Well, that has height in it. But that's talking about general area, not necessarily the building. "Within a unifying context that encourages increased pedestrian activity and promotes compatibility among neighboring land uses with the same or just, within the same or different districts." And there's, might be a few others there that staff can come up with, but...
Well, I mean, I guess it just comes down to, I mean, I think that you...
Maybe we should continue it.
You articulated it well. You don't like the design. You, in light of the height, sounds like you want less massing in light of the height. So, the question is, can we do something today to address your concerns or not? I mean, based on Angela's email, it sounds like she has a similar concern to at least one of you. But I, I mean, it's, it's really whether you can, you can suggest something to change this that'll make it satisfy either of you tonight, and I can't, I mean, I, I...
Well, I mean, that, there's several, I mean, I could, you showed the example to David. I mean, even if you look at this, this rendering of what landmark will be, how it's got different heights of the, on the, on, of the roof, I mean, just, and it's basically, it's originally about articulation. There's both setbacks, differences along the side of it, and there's also height differences on, it's not just round one height. I mean, there's, even if they're fake parapets, but there's something that's breaking up that massing. Those are the two things that I'd like to see, is I'd like to see more an articulation of the depth, and I'd like to see a broken-up pipe.
And that probably would, would help with the massing and the, and the way that, that it looks overall, so I would agree with Shannon on that. I don't know if there's anything we can do, really, on, on that right now. We're basically...
They'd have to go back and...
Yeah, redesigning the building, so...
So, I mean, if that's the case, then I would withdraw the motion and recommend a continuance and see if they're willing to go do that. Otherwise, I'm staying no.
Well, there's a missing commissioner, too, so it's up to the applicant whether they want to proceed with their current design and see what the fifth commissioner feels about the design using the standards, and then perhaps provide additional information, or, or they, or you could provide some feedback that's specific to a design standard, you know, so I've, you don't want, the worst thing you want to do, really, is design it from here without something in front of you, so...
Yeah, but I wanted to give them some feedback as to what I was talking about. And I, I'm gonna read part of what private citizen, anyway, Angela says. "I have concerns about the massing of the building proposed at 1091 Industrial Road. In the renderings, the hotel seems to cast a large presence over Britain that just straight up from the sidewalk. The setback from the street does not seem adequate for the building's large, flat, seven-story facade. I would encourage the commission to examine options that might soften the appearance of the building from the street." So, so, since we don't have, since we don't have a majority, should we continue it, should we have five commissioners and see whether or not they're willing to...
At this point, I think you may want to talk to the applicant to see what they want.
You know, Mr., Madam Chairman, I think if we could ask the architect to address some of your concerns this evening, I think I'd like to hear a little bit from the architect. One of the challenges with this site, in terms of reducing the height of the building, is gonna be economics. And, you know, that'll be up to the developer and owner as well to maybe instruct us as to, you know, where they are with that. We did meet with Commissioner Harper, and we talked about some of her concerns, and she did mention that she had an issue with regard to the height and massing of the building. We did talk about some architectural treatments that could potentially break up some of the larger elements, and one of the elements that she talked about was the section, if I could have the elevation up here, that would be helpful. At the edges of the building, on the left-hand side of the screen, where the signage is, you see that large light area, that, that vertical element? That's not broken up on the edge of the building? If I can use that, yeah, there we go.
The gray one, right below?
Yeah. Well, here's another, well, let's go back, yeah, if you can go back for me.
Can we get the answer?
There we go. There we go. So, this, this element here, she was concerned because this looked very tall, and it, there wasn't a lot of articulation in this element. One of the things that we talked about were extending some of these lines across this element, perhaps by making indentations into this, into the building itself, or using some material to break up the, the height of this mass there. Same thing on this end of the building, over here. So, those are some of the things that we talked about. In terms of, I mean, it's, if we're gonna do height, this is one of the locations that I think we're going to see it, and as you noted earlier, we have windy hill, we also have, across the street, we're going to have another large development with the L3 communication site, and it's likely that they'll be asking for additional height. So, I think that because of the location of the building, in terms of the, along the freeway, along Industrial Road, as was mentioned earlier by the commission, there won't be a canyon effect, and I think some of the trees along the frontage will soften the mass of the building. And there's actually a great deal of articulation in this building, if you take a close look at it. As the architect noted, these areas here are five feet in depth, and these radiate away from the building, breaking up the, the mass of the building in floor. These floors are broken up, and then you have different patterns along the frontage of a building, much like a fabric on, you know, a fabric wood. There's different patterns, different colors, and the mullions of the windows further break up the mass of the building and, and lower the appearance of the height. The cap on the building also helps to cap the top of the building, and you can see that there's shadow and depth in that, too. There's an indentation there. And then also, the port cochere helps to break up the mass of the building at the, at the ground level, and this is really where people are gonna see the building as they drive by. The building with the landscaping and the port cochere and the open windows really provides transparency at this level. Quite frankly, staff was most concerned about the parking garage, the mass of that, as opposed to the massing of the overall building, because staff believes that the use of the materials and the patterns along the buildings, within the usage of the indentations, as you can see here, too. There's indentations here that go inside the building, at the top of the building, and, and again, it's, these windows are set back, so, and, and this protrudes away from the building. So, there's actually a lot more going on than, than meets the eye at first glance. So, we gave a tremendous amount of consideration to this building. It is a very small site, and that's one other consideration. To get this to work, from an economic standpoint, and perhaps the developer can talk about this, but to get this to work on, on the site, and because of the water table, they had to go high to get the number, the room count, to make it economically feasible. So, again, one of the key considerations that we had, and the key worries that we had through this project, and this went through several iterations, was the parking garage. That is less articulated, it's a, it's a, you know, it doesn't have windows, per se. It's a, it's sort of a utilitarian component of the building, as opposed to a residential component of the building. So, we worked very hard with them to try and come up with materials and patterns and breaking up that mass of the building. And I think that they did a pretty, as good of a job as you're gonna get along this component. Actually, if you look at the metal material, it's, it's actually very high-quality material.
Yeah, I actually liked the, what they did with the parking garage. I don't have any problem with that at all.
Yeah. And I can understand what you're saying, is, is, for instance, with the landmark building, you know, there are areas of the building that step back away from, like, upper floors, particularly at the front of the building, step back away from the street, and then rise up. But again, in this location, because of the, of the size of the site, they have more difficulty. So, what they tried to do is articulate in a more elegant and refined way, in that another component of the articulation, as you can see this shadowing effect that's created by this, this part of the elevation that protrudes away from the building.
So, I don't think you're gonna change my mind on this by telling me more about what, what you see here. I think I'd like to hear from the applicant to see what they have to say, and I think I need to reopen the public hearing to do that, right?
Yes. Well, you can ask a specific question, but if it's gonna become a broad-based discussion, you should reopen the public hearing.
Okay, so I think, I think we're gonna reopen it.
I moved open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair...
Yes. Okay. Can we have the architect?
I can get up and say a few words and then turn it over to the architect, because it's on.
Yeah. By the way, I don't hate everything about this. I, I, you guys have done a really good job, and I, and we want you here, we really do.
Just so you know, we've worked back and forth with staff. This is not our first rendition, and there's been a lot of comment that has filtered back from staff and from council members and from public input, and so, yeah, we're, we're very proud of it. I know it may not, you may not be able to see all the articulation, and if, if you give us a chance to describe it, I think that might help. In terms of the economics, unfortunately, you just cannot lose a floor and still have a viable project. It's, it's plain and simple. This is an expensive site, it's expensive land, there's a cleanup that needs to take place on the site, there's some environmental issues. These are all things that we're gonna do. But in order to fund that, we need these rooms, and without them, we don't have a project, so. And I also did want to set the record straight, I did hear somebody say that this would be the tallest building. I believe that the hospital is the tallest, and then there are two others that are...
In the works.
In the same scope, that are in the works. But from a, from a land use standpoint, there are certain areas where you want to encourage height. This is absolutely one of them. This is, if, if the city were to look at where they want to see height, it would be in gateway areas, along the freeway, and that's what we have. So, I know you're concerned about height, but most...
I'm not, he's concerned about height.
Most cities are concerned as, as we are, and I'm concerned, 'cause I live here, and this is where height is being encouraged, because they don't want height where you're gonna have neighbors complaining. The landmark site was a good example, even though it's against, near the freeway, there's neighbors that had concerns, and rightfully so. You don't have neighbors complaining here. We try to look at another site and try to get height, it's gonna be very difficult. So, that's why I would ask that you reconsider this as a site that you should actually be encouraging height. So, I'll turn it over to the architect, and he can kind of walk you through some of the articulation.
Thank you.
And I know you worked really hard on this building, so, you know, please...
I'm here to be an architect and everyone would like to call your baby ugly, you know?
We all know it's not version one, so...
How far is the setback from Britain? I mean, from the, from the, from the rendering, it actually looks like it's a decent distance from the street, to me.
It actually is.
And that's even with a, it looks like a part of a dedication or something. I mean, I was trying to figure it out, but it looks pretty far to me.
So, it's 50 feet right there.
50 feet from Britain.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, I mean...
Newly aligned Britain.
Yeah.
Because that's with the dedication?
Yeah, actually, it's, it would be from the back of sidewalk, from the new back of sidewalk.
Say that again, please?
It's, so it's 50 feet from back of sidewalk, so you actually have the width of the sidewalk in addition to that, to the face of curb.
Mm-hmm. So, it's... I mean, I think that's just something that should be considered when you talk about, when you talk about...
When you talk about massing.
Articulation and massing, you know, to, I mean, if you're, if you're already 50 feet from the street.
I mean, the kind of things that would make a difference, I don't think are gonna take away from any of their, any, I, I think they could do it without changing their, their room sizes. I mean, I'm thinking more, in a way.
I'm curious to hear from the architect and see what...
Yeah.
Maybe kind of go over the, the design a little bit, a little bit more.
So, basically, the, the, the main concept behind the overall design was working on a very small, limited site with a program number of so many guest rooms to get out of the, for the economics to work. Basically, set the building into its current location. The building massing with the walls vertical toward the front ended up being more of a requirement from the fire department for fire ladder access to the upper-floor guest rooms. If we were to set them back much further, then we run into problems with fire ladder access. Here you see that the, the beige portion is the actual garage. It protrudes out beyond this, the ground floor. The ground floor then steps back and is, creates two different volumes. Once you get up to the next level, again, you have the large block for the parking garage. Again, the building is stepped back significantly from that facade, and then you have the green roof over the guest drop-off, which extends out beyond that.
So, how far, okay, so, there's, you said five feet from where the parking level is to where the blue level is?
No, it's actually around 15 feet on this floor.
Between those two, and then the green roof protrudes out how far?
Approximately 20 feet. And then this is the next level up. Again, you see the 15-foot setback between the, the plane of the parking garage and then the guest rooms. And here you start seeing the articulation of the guest rooms themselves. So, you have this lower, basically, what's kind of a screening element that comes out around the guest rooms to frame some of the guests, and picks up further. Here you're now seeing the top of the garage, and then it steps back 15 feet to where the guest room wall starts, so to speak. And here you see the articulation between the various guest rooms. You have the ones that are set back approximately five feet, the kings are about five feet back from the double queens. And again, that continues all the way up on the upper floors.
Yeah, this is, this is the, this is the area that I'm, I'm, the problem... Yeah, this is the area that I'm, I'm having the problem with everything up to the, we get to where we're, there's only, there's the five-foot articulation between the king and the double queens, that's pretty much it. And then you said that on the front, where it has all the kings, that's, that basically is the way it is because of fire requirements?
For these two facades, basically where you're seeing the double queens and then all the kings that wrap around the corner along Britton, that is primarily, basically because of a ladder requirement. If we were to push those back much further, then we run into problems with fire ladder access. We need to get the fire lane within so many feet of the face of the building. If we were to try to set it back even further, again, we're looking at losing keys at that location, because we pushed, say, if we were to push those kings back, say, another five, 10 feet, we're going to sacrifice a stack of guest rooms. Correct. Yeah, well, basically, what he brought up is, the roof is articulated. So what you're seeing, you don't see it here, because it's a flat elevation, but that green portion comes out the significant 15 feet. And then you have the larger bulk of the building stepped back behind, which has the finer-tuned articulation between the five-foot setback and the guest rooms. So the actual line of the floor is extending out, and that continues straight across the facade, and you create a thin shadow line, and then it goes back to a very deep shadow And again, here, this facade has quite a bit of articulation. And then concerns on the building height, actually, the site visibility as a gateway site, our thoughts and intentions were that this was actually a very good location for this, as was brought up. This is the view actually from the freeway, so it's not a tower, so to speak, but it is large enough to become a major element from visibility.
That's existing tree there, right?
Correct. So this one probably shows the articulation between those guest rooms, where you have the deeper setback guest rooms. So they set back considerable amount from that framing element. The idea was to create basically a series of boxes that would intermingle and stack upon one each other. So you have the green screen poking out further, and then the buildings basically breaking up in various planes, as you see it. Thank you for explaining that a little bit more thoroughly.
I don't have any other questions. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Do they change your mind?
Yeah, actually, it's helped me a lot, to be honest with you. I think I'd be prepared to reconsider.
Well, that makes it, my vote doesn't matter then, okay.
Well, this doesn't matter, so me, Shannon.
Yeah. Okay, so then, what we need to recall for the
Close the public hearing.
Okay, yeah. Have a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Oh, Dave. Oh, yeah.
Well, we don't have to, but if you want to come up, you can come up.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
We should have known who wanted to talk.
Sorry to be aggravating tonight, but
I know that you're capable of it.
Yeah, I think, you know, the issue is, I think, that you're seeing, I have no problem with the height. In fact, I wouldn't mind even higher, but I'd like to see it articulate a little bit more if it were higher. But I think one thing that's upsetting to me, at least, and I think maybe to Sharon, possibly, I don't know, to you at the end as well, is that it's, I'm sorry if I got your name, I apologize.
I forget Jesse's name all the time. Sometimes I curse him under my breath, too.
It's got that dead, flat roof on it, and it makes the building look really big. And if that had some articulation to it, I think that would help a lot. The other thing I was looking at is, they were looking at the, like, they have the queens and the kings, and they were moving them out. They moved them all in one line, and then they moved them out in one line. What if they alternated them so that you had them kind of popping in and out? You still have the same rooms, just moved around a little bit. Subtle things like that. I don't see change in the plan in a major way to make the thing have a little bit more exciting. Plus, the colors are pretty boring. Be nice to have some more interesting color to the thing, to spark it up a little bit. You know, so anyway, those are my comments on it. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Would there be an easy way to change the roof line, or is that, I mean, is it facade, or is it all structural, or, yeah?
That would make a big difference in
Yes, we do have that option. However, we were working with staff and design staff. We've already cut the building down about five to six feet, due to their concerns with the actual height of the building. So the actual height of the building is in relation to our reaction, more or less, to, here's how high you can go. We feel that this would be a good height, that we would allow you to go. If we were to go higher, then if we were allowed to be, come in with some more tower elements, then yes, that would be, that would be acceptable. But it's just a matter of
We couldn't do that today, because that would require a change of the plan development plan, right?
Right.
But as far as, like, the, I mean, I guess, I mean, I said I wasn't going to do this, but I mean, when you look at the, at the building, and we're looking at it on the screen, you basically got these two strong, straight lines that create this box effect all the way around. I mean, how much of that is design feature, and how much of that is, like, part of the structure?
The, so the lower, there's two bands here. You're looking at the lower band, that's actually the roof, that would be, so they'll say the roof parapet. Then the one that's further back, that has the deep shadow line on it, that's the mechanical screen, that would screen the mechanical rooftop equator.
Yeah.
If I could weigh in, Madam Chair, this is a contemporary design, and the upper element, I think, caps the building very well, and creates a shadow line effect at the top of the building parapet there, and really adds a cap, and it's elegant. I think that if you, I do like the way, on the left-hand side of the building, this cap element steps away from the edge of the building. You see that? And I really like the way it works on this elevation. In fact, you don't see that wide area at the street level at all, whereas in this elevation, you do. So on either side of the building, there's a difference in the way that this behaves at the corners of the building. I think that at the front corner of the building, I think that if you moved it away, I think it would look, it wouldn't look correct. It would actually cheapen the design at the primary corner, at Britton and Industrial. One option might be to add a break somewhere in that linear piece at the top of the building. And I respect the architect that spoke earlier, the comments about, you know, using a different popping colors and things like that. But this is, this design, it's contemporary, and there was a question about lasting the, you know, landmark status and the lasting effect of this type of architecture. And I've studied it a great deal, and looked at this type of architecture all over the country. And I think in this regard, I think this will stand the test of time. I think there is a potential, maybe, to do some things with the capping element, and if the commission felt very strongly that something ought to be done about that, we could work with the applicant to come up with some solution. But it works pretty well right now, in terms of making the mass of the building look lower, I think, because of that shadowing effect it creates.
I think that Jesse's ready to change his vote, anyway, which means that there'd be enough for this to pass, so I don't think we need to drag it on much longer. I mean, I just, I, I think, this is just the style of building that I don't have personal, since this is a design review, I do have a say in it. But, so anyway, I think that I entertain a motion to close
So, we don't usually do, like, parliamentary procedure, but I guess technically speaking, since Jesse voted no, would he remake the motion? Can I remake the motion? I mean, I don't know that really matters. There's, we haven't adopted any rules or procedure that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I mean, the city uses Robert's rules, and, you know, the, but I think what you have is not a typical motion that's passed. You have where there was no action, so I think you're just starting afresh, because there was no act
New motion, basically.
Just a new motion can be made by anyone, because no action was actually taken.
So I need to, do I need to restate my motion, or is it already on the record, and can I simply, you know, remake the same motion by reference?
I think you could restate, you could restate your motion by reference to the prior motion that you made.
We need to close the public hearing.
You do have to do that again.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes.
So I'm going to remake my prior motion on design review and the transportation demand management plan, which, in summary, was adoption of staff's recommendation, with four additional conditions, as agreed upon by the applicant.
Second. How about that? Change it up.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
No. Okay, all right.
So that was fun.
Motion passes.
And it's a, this, that was
It's a recommendation, so, well, the, the, the time is ours, right? I lost mine.
Yeah, the last one was your discretionary decision.
Not yours, that's mine.
I appreciate that.
The first two go to the city council.
That was a good exercise, right?
All right. Next on the agenda are reports, correspondence, and general information. Report on recent city council actions.
None for this evening.
Okay. Planning Commission comments or reports?
None, for me.
Correspondence?
None, other than the four pieces of correspondence that was sit on the dais tonight.
Okay. Planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects?
Yes. I would like to take the opportunity to inform the planning commission about an upcoming workshop that staff has scheduled with the consultant team Opticos, that's working with staff on single-family development standards, and who is also working with staff on refinements to some of the mixed-use zoning districts in the downtown, particularly the Downtown Core and along Laurel Street, south of Arroyo, as that mixed-use portion along Laurel, you know, relates to the residential zoning district immediately adjacent to it. I'm going to be passing out flyers that we have posted in the glass case, as well as, as well as noticed in the local newspaper, and on all of the social media sites that we have access to here at the city, and have city social media sites for. So the intent for the upcoming workshop on May 24th is to invite the community to have a dialogue about building height in the Downtown Core. As the commission may recall, the maximum number of stories that you could possibly have in the Core is four, with a corresponding building height. So we want to take a closer look at how tall buildings should be, just in the Core area, the 600, 700, and 800 blocks of San Carlos. So for those that may be interested, or know folks that have an interest and care and concern about our Downtown Core, this is a workshop open to the public. It'll be located at the library, in the, on the second floor, again, Wednesday, May 24th, at 6:00 p.m.
Great, thank you. And if there's nothing else?
No.
Meeting adjourned.[1583.53]